District 36 School Board. Can I have a roll?
Mr. Crumley, here, Mr. Hall Sizer.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Ms. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
So I'd like to welcome you all to this evening's school board meeting. This is the regular meeting. And honored we have, the superintendent's report has the meat of the discussion tonight. We are going to recap the work session, and we are going to have the tax levy discussion, the WPSF update, and technology one-to-one. But first, we're going to start with public comments. I know, I notice we have Eva Termini and Betsy Jamietro.
Let me do that. Let me do that in three. We have six minutes.
Our WPSF presidents, our co-presidents?
Yes. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So since the last board meeting, almost all of the parents in District 36 have had the opportunities to conference with their child's teacher. As you know, teachers spend a great deal of time preparing for conferences. At the elementary level, teachers begin the year getting to know their children, their students, by talking with children, watching them work and play, and observing how they deal with conflicts. In the middle schools, teachers do the same kinds of informal observations to get a sense of where students are and what their needs are. Of course, once we settle in, we also do a wide variety of academic assessments so that we know what kinds of skills children are entering our classrooms with. These assessments not only help us to know children, but they help us plan in a way that differentiates instruction and supports each child. Teachers collaborate with each other, sharing information about each child to complete the picture. Then we organize all this information so that we may present the parents with a vivid picture of their childhood at school. In addition to the thoughtful way that teachers prepare for conferences, they are currently faced with quite a few of new initiatives. Many teachers are simultaneously implementing two very dense sets of materials, Turk and the Teachers' College writing materials, as well as tracking use of math practices, the cornerstone assessments, pre- and post-assessments, and other initiatives are being undertaken. The planning and preparation for this required is substantial. And the risk, of course, is that when we are trying to integrate so many things at once, it becomes increasingly difficult to do so in the deep and thoughtful way to which we are accustomed. Let us be clear, we are not saying that we cannot do this work. We are saying that at the pace at which these initiatives are being adopted has made us question whether the philosophy of the board has changed to a point of losing many of our progressive values. The bottom line is that we're very proud of our colleagues. They work very hard. But we're not the only ones who are very appreciative. We often receive feedback from parents after conferences, and because these parents are your constituents and your community members, we thought you might want to hear what they're saying.
I have never seen my daughter so this happy and confident. It was a great conference.
I just want to pass along how impressed I am with my son's supportive team. They've all initiated conversations with me independent of each other, showing their interest in getting to know our son. I appreciate all of the hard work that goes into coordinating the right group of people to help best meet our son's needs. I can't express enough what that means to our family. Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know that we opened our son's sixth grade ISAT results tonight. It was amazing how much he improved over fifth and fourth grade reports, uh, fifth and fourth grade reports, and actually slipped into the exceed standards in reading. Most of all, this reinforced to our son that hard work does pay off, and you should all have seen the smile on his face.
There are some things that teachers need to know. At the beginning of our year, my daughter would come home for lunch, she would not want to go back to school because she had to run in KW. My creative and more artistically inclined daughter did not find lab so interesting. It didn't take long, however, for you to win her over and put KW at the top of her list. Thank you for helping her appreciate something new and for your positive energy.
Just to let you know, Saturday was spent on the trampoline as a butterfly.
Just wanted to send a quick note to thank you for being such a fantastic and inspiring teacher. I couldn't understand why my daughter wanted to sleep on the floor in the bedroom tonight till she explained that she wanted to camp out like the Native Americans and experience what nighttime was like for them. I love to see her so engaged and excited.
We couldn't be more pleased. Our daughter has made a great, smooth transition to a new school. She's happy socially, and she's learned so much in such a short period of time. We're really impressed with the way she's learning compared to her previous school. It seems much deeper.
I won the jackpot in kindergarten, I won the jackpot in first grade, and now I won the jackpot again. We've had nothing but good teachers. You know my child so well.
Thank you for helping my third grader with her writing assignment. And by the way, I thought I'd share this with you. My older daughter is working on an assignment at the middle school where she too is writing about the same topic. And she was also asked to edit out a huge section that wasn't tied to the small moment. I like the consistency in teaching.
All too often, I have missed opportunities to tell people about a difference that they've made in the lives of my children. I want to thank you for helping to spark what I know will be a lifelong love of Spanish for my son.
I have to let you know that when we went to Cancun, and our son did such a great job conversing with everyone. So many locals kept commenting on his fluency and accent. Thank you for everything this year.
As a former English teacher, I'm delighted that my daughter's getting such sophisticated writing training. The drafting process and the willingness to write and rewrite helped create a growth mindset. But my wife put it best, "This is awesome stuff. Learning to write at this age, like this, fabulous." Thanks for your role as a transformational teacher in her life.
Just wanted to share what a wonderful year my daughter is experiencing. It may be due to maturity, but in the past, our daughter really struggled with math. And this year, she's doing just awesome. She seems to have blossomed under her math teacher's guidance and teaching. She is so incredibly proud of her work and test scores. Just wanted you to know.
And from a parent whose child is in the new extended resource program, thank you. Thank you so much for sharing all you do for her each and every day. Our child is a product of her love, is a product of her loving, kind, and respectful school environment. We know how blessed we are to have each and every one of you in our lives.
These are just some of the voices of the Leneca Parent Community, your community. We're grateful to the many parents who have taken the time to give us feedback about what they observe and what is important to them. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, on to communications and quiet.
Don't even have my computer up. So on page 255, you can see that we've got coverage on a number of topics related to everything from ISAT scores to the tax levy discussion to one-on-one iPad rollout. In terms of communication from citizens, we had a analysis from Katie Scullion of the recent ISAT results, and we'll be discussing those later in the meeting.
So I'd like to, just one comment, is that the last time we had the communications, I know one of the takeaways was that the administration was going to give us access to drafts of the responses to communication. So the superintendent has done that. In the back of the packet, there's a draft of response to Katie Scullion. We have, we have actually the full caucus platform here. So in light of that, I think it probably makes sense, if you have comments or you have questions on the response to Ms. Scullion, you can forward that either to me or to Dr. Hagerman, and we'll have a more, you know, more comprehensive discussion on the caucus polling study upcoming, or maybe. Okay, on to the consent agenda. And we are going to try to do all of these together. So a motion is requested that the school board approve the consent agenda, which includes the following: payroll and invoices for the period October 25, 2013 through November 19, 2013. Payroll of $1,131,871.82. Invoices of $4,545,779. For a total of $5,677,650.82. In addition, board meeting minutes as listed in the agenda. A personnel report as listed in the, oh, the dates. Work session meetings on October 22, and regular session meetings on October 22. In addition, the personnel report with the one amendment that, item seven, calls for the termination of classified staff, Kevin Glover, and there is no, no letter. So do we have a motion?
No.
So we have a roll call?
Ms. Wallace. Yes, Mr. Hall Sizer.
Yes.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Ms. Crumley. Yes, Mr. Shannon.
Yes. All right, on to item seven, the superintendent's report.
Okay. We had a very good work session. We had actually covered through quarterly policy updates from the School Board Association. There were three that were called out for further conversation around student residency, inter-district transfers, and the food allergy program. It was noted that the food allergy program is still being worked on in terms of doing collected questions from staff members, community members. We'll have some additional information to bring back to supplement the food allergy program that's in place based on that. We talked about next steps and communication pieces on that. The school improvement plans, Allison introduced the panel of the scheme principals who will help to present the goals for the year. As a reminder, that all of the individual school plans make up a district-wide improvement plan. These are plans that are developed by using host of data at school sites. It's also the work that's going on in conjunction with a lot of other works. I just want to kind of point that out, that we still are doing all our strategic planning goals, lots of other initiatives going on, but these are really kind of focused for building base in addition to these other pieces. And then finally, Tom Shannon led the financial subcommittee recommendations presentation that overviewed sort of historical trends in many different areas, enrollment to taxation to spending. Talked about the work of the committee over the past year, and put forward a list of recommendations, part of which is the possible levy that we will be talking about later this evening in terms of adoption of the tentative levy this meeting and the formal levy in the December meeting.
One question. So the, the financial philosophy subcommittee recommendations came out a little bit late to include in the board packet. This is something that we'll include in next month's board packet? Is this something we can also post to the website?
Sure. As a matter of process, so that people know, the packets tend to go out on Thursday or Friday before the board meeting. Technically, you can have some handouts at the board table, but anything substantive needs to reappear really for the full public purview, as John just mentioned. So it will be in the board packet in its entirety at the December meeting, but we can also certainly make it available online. So anyone who wants to peruse that information is welcome to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I'm going to actually turn it over to Susan to talk to us about alternative tax levy and debate options at the board and identify as part of their recommendations.
Thank you. What am I doing? There we go. Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Hagerman, board members. It's my pleasure, once again, to talk to you about the tax levy. As you know, every December, we adopt a tax levy for the coming year. This is the second of three tax levy presentations I will be doing this year in total. The first one was last month. We talked about preliminary levy discussion, get some options out of the table at that time. Tonight, I'm going to be asking the board to adopt the tentative levy, and then establish the public hearing for December 17, when the levy will be adopted in conclusion, and then filed with the county clerk. I think that this slide illustrates pretty succinctly that just because you levy an amount of money does not necessarily mean that that is what you collect. So for example, the 2012 levy, we levied without bonds $35.8 million. When the county then extended the levy after establishing what the values were of the property, it was reduced then to $35.4 million. So a difference of approximately $343,000. These are the various funds, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about funds later on, as we work through our presentation, that we levied presently for. The one levy that we do not establish is the bond and interest levy. How much will need to be raised every year was determined long ago when the bonds were sold. So I just wanted to point that piece out for everyone now that is done. There are several allowable levies in Illinois law. We do not levy in all of them. As you can see, we do not levy presently for special education. But if we were to levy for special education, we could ask for up to 40 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. As you can see, and the other slide will tell you what the rates ended up being once the extension was done. Our total rate this past year was $2.726. And then you add it on another 36.78 cents, once you had the bonds in there. What I put to the right are the levy ceilings. So for example, the education fund, a taxing district, a school district, could levy up to $3.50 per $100 of assessed valuation for the education fund. Our levy is well, well below that, at just about $2.23 per 100. But I think it's important to do that, to point this out, because there are strategic reasons why you would levy in certain funds and not in others. And one of those is life safety. What life safety is, is a levy that would allow the district to collect 10 cents per $100 of assessed valuation for projects, life safety projects, that were identified by a survey that every school district in the state of Illinois has to conduct every 10 years. Once you have money in the life safety fund, it can only be used for projects identified as part of the survey. So for example, if you had something, like for example, if you had a roof that suddenly needed to be replaced, and it wasn't in the survey, you couldn't access those dollars. Instead, strategically, what we have done is we've put money into the building fund for maintenance and long-term development. If you look at the history of assessed valuation, and that is the total of all taxable properties in our district, as you can see, it peaked in about 2008, 2009. But since then, it's been going down appreciably every single year since. The reason for that is multiple reasons. One is that property values aren't as high as they used to be. Another thing is that the county comes on, and they said, every property has to be, in Illinois, has to be assessed at a third of fair market value. In Cook County, there's what's called a property classification system, which means residential property is assessed at 10% of fair market value. The state doesn't allow that, so they put a multiplier on to the assessment in an attempt to bring uniformity to the extensions, or to the EAV, assessed value, of a third of fair market value. You'll notice, as we go to the next slide, that as assessed valuation to go down, tax rates tend to go up. It's an inverse relationship between the two. So as you can see, the downward slide, and then here, the upward slide in the tax rates. This is the multiplier that I was talking about. Cook County, I believe, is the only county in the state of Illinois that has a multiplier put on it. It's the only one on board. DuPage does not, because they levy, or they assess it a third of fair market value. And I'm not sure about the other color counties, but I don't believe that they do as well. But as you can see, that then affects what the assessed valuation ultimately becomes. In preparation for this evening's meeting, I prepared three different levy scenarios. One was to levy at the Consumer Price Index of 1.7%. What that means is that last year's extension, so if you extend it, and as I had in that earlier slide, we extended total about $35.4 million. You cannot go over 1.7% of that amount. It's not allowed. There is an extent, there's an exception, however, for new property that comes on to the tax rolls. And that is not, that does not qualify under what the county refers to as the limiting rate. And I do apologize, I know this is very, very technical information, so I'm trying to keep it as simple as I possibly can, but it is very nuanced. Establishing a levy is not simple. It is a nuanced calculation. So assuming that we could get 1.7% CPI, they'll bring in, you know, about $300,000 into the district, I believe, if my calculations are here. Levy number two scenario is levy at the CPI, but abate about $2 million, which is coincidentally what the financial reporting subcommittee talked about earlier this evening. Where I came up with my $2.18 million was I took where we ended, where we tentatively have ended last fiscal year, in terms of surplus from last fiscal year, ending June 30, 2013, and the difference between that and the ending fund balances of June 30, 2012. And I estimated, although our audit is presently in progress, that the total in those three funds, education, operation and maintenance, and transportation, would be about $4.3 million. And I thought you could abate or not collect $2 million. What an abatement does is when we, when we give the levy to the county to extend, instead of collecting the full amount, they can collect the $2 million, less than $2 million, or less than $4 million, whatever the abatement amount ends up being. So our next step is going to be to adopt a tentative tax levy and establish a public hearing for December. Before we do that, I had several assumptions that were part of our process this year in determining the levy. I assumed, for the sake of argument, that our existing property values remained constant. And as you can see from the earlier slide, that's about $1.3 billion. We are presently in the midst of a triennial reassessment. We don't know what our values will actually be until much later. But I assumed no change in that. I assume $14.1 million in new property growth, which is the average over the last three years. And I also put, maintained, what's called a loss and cost factor on our debt and on the other levies. What loss and cost does is if you make a mistake, or if collections happen to fall, and this is particularly important to the bondholders, loss and cost would enable the county to collect a little more, but still under the property tax cap for all levies except the debt levy, just in case people didn't pay their tax bills, or tax bills were, you know, not fully collected for some unknown reason, because the bondholders have to be repaid. So here's levy option number one, and that is to levy at the full rate of 1.7%. So I'm guesstimating that if I do so, I'm going to come up with an aggregate levy of about $41.8 million with the bonds. So a net change of 3.76. The bond rate, as I said, was the rate that was established when the bonds were sold, in and of itself, is going to go up about 12%. Option number two, which is to abate, so instead of collecting all of the money that we would be able to collect, we will abate, my recommendation would be to abate for part of our bonds, and therefore reduce that levy by about 33%, or a total of about 1.55% reduction. This is very, these are very estimated numbers, because we don't know what's going to happen with the assessed valuation. Nobody does. Nobody knows what will happen with the multiplier, because those rates, it hasn't all been finalized yet. People are filing tax appeals, et cetera. And then option number three would be to abate a larger amount. You save almost 80% off of your bonds, and overall, about 7.5%. So my recommendation, well, here's my final thing, is if we abated, if we abated, there we go. This is actually the wrong slide, but that's okay. If we abated for option two, we would come up with, excuse me, no, this is right, $39.6 million would be our extension. If we abated for option number three, it'd be $37.4 million. To put all of the options into one place, this is what we would be looking at. So as you can see, when I'm looking at the general levy for education building, it is unchanged, basically, from option to option. And the reason for that is because we need the funds in those, we need the money in those funds in order to operate our program, pay our bills, et cetera. One of the big changes that you will notice in this year's tentative levy is you can see, last year in working cash, we levied, well, we extended, actually, $98,000. This year, I'm recommending that we take that levy up considerably to $700,000, because we had an audit done last year by IMRF, and we owe the IMRF fund, we owe IMRF, we don't actually physically owe them money, but we need to repay fund money into that fund, because we use proceeds from IMRF tax levy to pay for social security, FICA, Medicare costs. No money was lost, it's just a question of what pot the money was put into and the bills were paid. And I know that's confusing, so if anybody has any questions, I would be happy to speak with anyone privately off, you know, after my presentation or later on in the evening. So those are the three options I have presented. And as you can see, they have varying effects on estimating rates. And so I would ask the board then to consider levying at 1.7%, maintaining our loss and cost factor, and then abating at $2 million, which is the financial subcommittee's recommended amount. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Susan, the, just a quick question, but the, on your slide that showed, that compared the levy versus the extension.
Mm-hmm. Maybe you have to go back?
Second or third slide.
Yeah.
So the, the extension is the amount that's actually collected?
Well, yes and no. It's what they put onto the tax bills.
Okay.
You know, not everybody pays the tax bills.
All right, so there's another column which is actually collected based on?
And that is not up here. One thing I think is important to point out, and so I'm glad you brought that question up, is that when there is a tax appeal made, and someone appeals their property taxes, that money comes off of present year's collections. And so, as a good business manager, it's good practice to track what happens with collections over time. And it takes years for these things to work through. So for example, I looked up to 2010, which is pretty much the last year that the PTABs have been finalized, and in about 18-month period, we lost about 1 point, almost $1.3 million in collections, the revenues that we did not get because of tax appeals, refunds, et cetera. So another part of my recommendation for tonight, and I didn't put it into the final slide there, would be to consider entering into PTAB appeals. It's a very, very common practice, yes.
Property tax appeal board.
When there is a tax protest, and will result in a change of over $100,000 or more, and someone's assessed valuation, whether it's a property owner or a business, they go through a process called PTAB, or they can file directly in circuit court. Those are the two mechanisms for tax protesting, other than regular, you know, minor ones. Districts like ours get notified when there is an appeal made. And many districts appeal that. that decision for the reduction, and they argue the assessed valuation is incorrect, or whatever the case may be. There's a consortium of New Trier Township feeder districts and the Village of Willmett that we can become a part of, and actually have our appeals make a pretty significant difference for our taxpayers in general. I think one of the things that I would mention is that the Civic Federation, which some people may or may not know, does a lot of work in terms of public policy and taxation, and one of their platforms, or one of their reports concluded that there is a huge, there's a huge relationship between EAV and tax extension changes. So when someone appeals and it changes the tax extension, then for everyone, for all property owners. So because one person was successful, that makes everybody else's taxes go up, because that's just the nature of the game. It's called a zero-sum game, and I actually have links to the full Civic Federation report, if anybody would like to read it. I did quote part of this report in the board memo I prepared this evening. So, next month, I will be bringing forth a resolution for the board to consider joining the consortium, in the interest of fairness to all taxpayers.
Unless the appeal is fair.
Well, in which case it will stand. And we would only appeal once that we might have a chance of winning, or that we exceed a benefit to the district in excess of $10,000.
And we're making those determinations in the district?
Right.
What is our basis for determining whether an appeal is fair or not fair?
We don't. That goes to our attorneys.
It would go to the attorney. They do a class?
They don't waste the legal fees if they think that the person that's making the appeal is going to, because the way they, the way they collect money on these is much different than available hour. So they don't, if they don't think they are absolutely in right, they don't even touch it. That's, it's, it's...
There are a number of ways. You can have a base on comps, you can have a base on, you can have a, so there's a number, they know, they just break them down, look at the numbers, and see if this is going to be something that's worth the time and energy to pursue or not.
And they have a model system that they use with the New Trier districts in terms of these appeals, so it's not excessively costly. So for example, they could have an appraisal done for $350,000, which is very reasonable. About a month or so ago, I had an opportunity to hear someone as part of a school business manager meeting from the assessor's office. Because of the triennial coming up, they really recommended that school districts take a very, very hard look at the tax appeals, because of the long-term implication that that will have. If you want a $10,000 reduction in one year, that period is then over for the next three years, so it's not just 10 in a year, it's $30,000 over three.
One other question I had, there was a column you have called loss.
And cost.
It might have been referring to loss and cost, but it was just called loss.
Do you know where that?
It's, sorry, it's at the back of your, it's right at the final recommendation. I don't know where the next one, that one, loss and cost.
Right. That would be what would be added, but then subtracted, depending on what happens with the property tax cap. So for example, we have lovely $37.2 million, they put the 3% loss on that, so actually, but then they reduce it, because it's all subject to the property tax cap, so our 37 would go down to 36. But as you can see with the bonds, because there is no, they're, the bonds are not subject to the tax, limiting tax rate, that money goes into the bond fund, and then ultimately will get used to repay the debt. Because once money goes into the debt fund, it can't come out. It stays there.
And given our intention is a absolute reduction in tax, taxes, that is, that the dollar tax bill next year will be lower than the dollar tax bill this year, does that get?
The extension will be lower.
Well, the amount, the amount of money that is collected from the taxpayers, let's put it that way.
You know, we really can't say what happens on that.
In total, for the whole village, we can say that, yeah?
I think that the Civic Federation really did a very nice explanation of this. They said that, I guess just to quote it, says the interrelationship between property EAVs and tax extension changes make it extremely difficult to reliably predict changes to individual tax bills.
And I'm not talking about individual tax bills.
But property taxes in Cook County are a zero-sum game, meaning that tax relief provided to one property owner must be paid for by all other owners, because it affects both the total EAV, the pine which the rate is based, and it goes down and down.
That sounds like a group that's advocating tax increases to set, you know, taxpayers one against each other, but let's not comment on that. What, I'm not talking about individual tax bills, because I understand that that, I'm talking about the total.
The total extension would be less.
The total tax, because, because we know that the distribution of that total amount is dependent on the relative EAVs between homeowners.
Correct. But it depends on what happens with, as I said earlier, this is a triennial year.
Right.
So what happens, we won't extend as much if we abate, but what actually happens to the bills is going to depend on what happens with the triennial.
Yeah, so I understand that. So with the amount, total amount of money that we are seeking to collect.
Is less.
We are seeking that number to be less.
Yes, that's exactly what we're doing with the abatement.
Now, does the loss and cost mechanism compromise that in any way?
No.
It does not?
No. Because the loss and cost is still subject to the property tax cap on all of the funds, with the exception of the debt service fund, and that's the fund that you want to have to build to repay the debt once it's callable in 2017. So it actually works to your benefit, or the taxpayer's benefit, because it's very restrictive.
Help me out here, so for the schools, okay, do we tax differently, schools relative to, say, parks?
Oh, absolutely.
So we have a different, so is, so you're paying as a dollar, I know we levy, except...
When you say tax differently, I guess I'm assuming you meant...
Meaning if I pay $10,000, right, in taxes, a certain percentage goes to schools, a certain percentage, right? Do we levy, is the equation different for me relative to my next-door neighbor, not assuming my property values are the same, assuming his property is worth half a month or twice a month, right? Would he pay, and the school, do we charge a different equation than, say, parks or library, et cetera? Is it universal? The reason I'm asking this goes to something I was just sitting here thinking about, which is that if, I asked Tom earlier, I said, what if, what if we, or John, I said, contemplating a $30 million village investment currently, and we're talking about putting $30 million into cash, why abate too many? Why don't we abate $30,000?
Because it would affect all of your future levies by doing that, because you can't abate the debt levy without affecting future levies, but you can't abate $30 million, because you don't have $30 million in outstanding debt doable, do right now.
What's the maximum abate rate you can do that?
Without affecting future tax levies?
Yep.
Of $5 million.
So as I understand, Susan, you can, you can abate, the maximum you can abate is the total debt service in that particular year?
For that year, for that year.
So, where do we come up with $2 million?
That was, actually, Tom was going to get to that. Interestingly enough, when you presented option, option two, which was 2.18 million, we ended up on the Financial Philosophy Subcommittee, 2.0 million. You know, there's actually quite a bit of modeling done. Tom did all this modeling, it's on, it starts on page nine, and goes to page 10. Tom, can you walk us through just really briefly, you know, the 90-second explanation of how we modeled, and how we ended up with $2 million, $2 million in a way? Because it flows all the way through to the, to our surplus fund.
Yeah, so the, I guess the page to refer to is page nine, in this orange debt.
There is a back, we tried to put a magnifying glass on the last page, but it was hidden in the back, it's, so...
So, so with this, with this, we made some assumptions about, it's called, it's the document that Tom says abate 3% of cost, okay? And we made an assumption that total costs will grow at 3%, okay? And I think that's a rather conservative assumption, because if enrollments continue to decline, cost per student at 3%, it's likely that costs will, total cost will grow less than that, but we wanted to be conservative, so the cost's growing at 3%. And what we were trying to solve for was, A, can we take $30 million out of the reserves for debt repayment, because that will have a very material impact on our costs in the future, once we're able to call that debt and pay that debt down. And we were trying to solve for maintaining a surplus, at the line at the bottom, surplus deficit after capital projects. You see that in the, starting in 2014, 15, we're trying to keep that number, you know, trying to maintain some surplus. So, and we were trying to maintain the balances, that's on the next page, on page 10, above, you see the operating balances of operating cost line, we're trying to maintain that line at 50, above 50%, right? So if we take $30 million out of the balances to reserve for debt repayment, that reduces our operating balance as a percent of operating cost from 139% to 53%. And then we're basically taking the rest of, we're taking, any remaining residual we have, and using it for abatement, and that number turned out to be $2 million.
And if you look at the, you can, you can maintain that, I mean, we went all the way up to 2021, and we actually tried it, we went to 2.18 million, and you drop a little 50%, 50% benchmark for operating blood balances. So that's how we ended up at $2 million as opposed to 2.18 million.
There's also a wisdom, I think, in having a steady stream of abatements, because that way you're not having a yo-yo effect on property ownership.
Yeah, that was another thing we're trying to solve for.
Because we're one year it's this, and the next year it's that, and...
With some sort of continuity.
Right.
So we're not, you, the thing you could do if you abate one year and don't abate the next, you could have a decline in the tax rate, and then, and then it'll spike back up.
Right.
So we wanted to maintain a smooth trajectory. So we're trying to solve for three or four things at once, and this was the thing that optimized it. Said another way, Matt, if you, you could conceivably abate $5 million, but then you don't have the money to pay down the debt, and, which is a pretty significant benefit if you would have failed to abate more.
If you, if you look on that model, you'll see that, starting in 2017, our debt payment is $5.2 million, and by paying it off, like, paying $30 million off, it drops immediately to $3.4 million, $3.5 million in 2018, and continues to go down to $1.9 million in 2021. So we're saving, we're saving millions of dollars.
I get, I get that. I get it. Are you trying to keep the AAA stats, which is why we're driving this? However, if you're buying back after debt today, and we're still maintaining a surplus, and we're half-funded, you would think, AAA with twice as much debt, you know, I don't know that you actually need to pay it off today.
Pay off all the debt?
You don't need to put 30 million, you could, in theory, you could abate $5 million, right, for the next four or five years.
I mean, you could decide, you could decide to pay down $15 million and abate more. Yeah, those are...
I get, I think you're kind of, you're smoothing is probably the best driver.
Yeah, that's what we're solving for.
That's the principal driver, the steady...
We don't want to, we don't want to whipsaw the finances of the district.
Right. And the $30 million goes into?
What is it going to, just treasuries? We, we, the idea is to put it into treasuries that have a maturity date equivalent to the call date, so you get a few, you know, you get, you get a slightly higher yield.
Right.
Rather than what we have today, which is shorter-term treasuries, which is the right thing to do with this.
There's no way to do this with the village, right? It's very intuitive, you'd think, lending and borrowing, I'm going to pay investors a few percent for nothing. How do we take our own credit?
We need to have a subcommittee of the subcommittee to look into that.
Well, we, I mean, of course, we looked, we looked at early payback, early buydown of the debt, it was too, it was too expensive to call, right? And difficult and expensive to call early, yeah. You could, you could imagine, there would be, if we were a bank, there would be more economical ways to deal with the money we have, like, you know, like a loan, but we're not a bank. We can't do those ourselves.
Yeah, we actually, we had a chance to sit down with, it was an essay from William Blair and...
John Isbell, Schreiber-Hausser.
Yeah, so, you know, an attorney, and essentially, there are a variety of laws and regulations to prevent us from doing almost anything in this, this kind of approach.
Yeah, state of Illinois is very restrictive in terms of what budget you can transfer into and from.
Public debt, it's all strictly, it's very different. Do we have any, any final questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, the next item is an update on the McCall School Foundation, and I love, we talked about this, but last year, the foundation came to us and wanted to come up with a different structure for, do you want to talk to this?
No, no.
Are you all to tell us?
Some, I'm ready. Start it.
Okay. Sort of a different vision of the, of the way we support it, so in the past, they sort of raised all this money, and then they found lots of ways to support the district in different ways, I call it a program. But they were really interested in, again, having some more accountability, transparency with that process, really earmarking dollars in ways specific ways. And so we developed a new plan that Allison is going to now walk us through.
Thank you. Every year collaboratively, the administrative arm of the Winnetka Public Schools, Tricia, Thomas, myself, administrative team, meets with the Winnetka Public Schools Foundation Board to put together a plan. And as Dr. Higgin mentioned, we did look at it in a different way, they had an interest in restructuring their funds, and certainly, we have a deep appreciation for the support that the Winnetka Public Schools Foundation has offered us over the years, not only for offering opportunities for enriching experiences for our students, but also for our teachers in terms of supporting lifelong learning, and the value of lifelong learning across the district for everybody. One of the primary things that they took into account when they were reworking our plan was really trying to align the core values of our district with the mission behind the restructuring of the Winnetka Public Schools Foundation. So some of those things include looking at the whole child, creativity and innovation, reflection, and certainly the lifelong learning that I mentioned before. So when looking at the, the whole plan, they decided to divide it into three different tiers of funding, which I will talk about on one slide for each tier of funding. It will continue, though it is divided into support for core academic programs, creativity and innovation, and then the continued support of the Winnetka Summer Institute that we hold biannually here, once school gets out. Their, their mission has always been to provide the above and beyond materials and experiences beyond the core of what the district provides in terms of curriculum, materials, and support. Certainly, the continued professional development has been more and more important as we've gone to implement these very complex initiatives that do require a lot of teacher retraining, or at least extra support in terms of expanding the repertoire of strategies. Teachers have really come to rely on that over the years to continue to keep their professional knowledge base growing. The first dimension of the plan is the Core Plus. It mirrors the curriculum review cycle. Um, it mirrors the curriculum review cycle, uh, every six years, go through major initiatives of curriculum review. This year, uh, we've kicked off, as I've mentioned in previous core meetings, science, social-emotional learning, uh, kinetic wellness and health, and I'm sure I'm forgetting another one, but, uh, definitely those. In year three, when you go through your implementation, you have your core materials that the district has supported, um, and any, any, um, ancillary materials that go with the new curriculum, but the, the idea of the Core Plus is that during that particular implementation year, this year it's math and world language, is that we can request for additional materials, uh, that go above and beyond what the district provides. So, an example of that could be, uh, right now, the world language team is looking at introducing level reading into their classes, and what they're really looking to do is to have a range of, um, books for kids to read, uh, across the grades to enhance their Spanish proficiency. So that would be one example. Certainly, extra sets of manipulatives for math would also be something that they would be interested in asking for or requesting from the foundation. Creativity and innovation is the other piece, that's the other bucket. Um, this includes the research grants and artist-in-residence funds. The research grants, uh, in, in the past, teachers apply for them, they have goals, uh, and they have focused inquiry that they're interested in being supported and doing. These research grants go to a committee, the committee is in-house in terms of the district, it's comprised of administrators, teachers, curriculum director. Each, uh, each application is reviewed very carefully and by committee, and none is approved, um, based on the relative funds and how relative it is, or relevant it is to, um, specific goals that we're pursuing at the time. Artist-in-residence also is, um, something that has been important in terms of looking at the arts and engaging the whole child in terms of their education. That will continue again this year, um, it is certainly designed to bring in experts within their field or their discipline to kind of work closely with students, um, and that's been something that's been very important over the years. Summer Institute, as I mentioned before, is our biannual, um, institute that we have over the years, had, as soon as school gets out, some years it's been two days, some years three, some years four. It has allowed us to bring in some really phenomenal nationally-known people and help support, um, bringing Daniel Pink here several years ago, when he talked about creativity and innovation, we were able to bring Sancho Tan to the district two years ago to talk about, uh, the state of progressive ed and, and the changing, uh, countable environment. Um, it is facilitated by a staff committee, we currently have a list of potential topics brainstormed by our curriculum council that is gonna go out to the whole staff in terms of helping to determine a, a collaborative decision around what theme it will be this year. Um, but the funding for this is, is very, um, important to the operation, and we certainly appreciate the continued support. Um, and again, often our summer institutes, one year, um, we had teachers collaborating in writing project, come in and for a week do a writing institute with all of our staff, um, and certainly shows, or like to be a part of that summer institute, so it can often be a springboard for work that continues throughout the school year, not just isolated within those four days, and that has been, um, very valuable to us. So those are the three, um, tiers, and I don't have a Q and A slot, but we will say Q and A.
No questions?
Yes.
Very much. Okay, and, um, finally, we have our technology and one-to-one update, and these are interspersed in each of our meetings, um, with longer and shorter presentations, so about, so every other month they will carry us a work session, I don't, I'm in a regular board meeting, I was supposed to be able to do the shorter version, we'll have a more extensive one at this much meeting, but not too long. Walk us through all the work you and your team have been doing up to date.
Thank you very much. Um, since we last talked at the board level, there's been a huge amount of work going on with the tech team and also the teachers who are involved in the one-to-one rollout, and I'll cover that later to begin, and then we'll talk a little bit more about the measurable goals that the board asked me to address a little bit more about in the last meeting. So, to begin, since I last saw the board, we have had parent and parent-student iPad rollout meetings at all of the grade levels except one, our last rollout is tomorrow morning, and it'll be in Mr. Dunn's room in, in, at Crow Island, but we have been to Hubbard Woods, grades two and three, Washburn, we had a couple of parent nights at Washburn, and then we did a grade five and six meeting, where all ninety-one of the students who were involved came on one night, and we divided them into four classes and had a, a big parent-student iPad setup party. And then finally, last night, I was here at Greeley with, um, Kelly Ryan's room, and we talked to the first grade parents about the iPad rollout. These are some photos that I took at some of these meetings, these were the Hubbard Woods second and third grade parents, the end, we passed out the iPads and had them check out all the apps that were on it, and they were very interested to see what apps should be used at the beginning of the program. This is a great picture of a couple of parents helping their, their son set up his, I believe, seventh grade iPad. There is a extremely fun sixty-two step process that they went through, and some of the steps were simply pressed against, cap United States, or whatever, whatever the setup was, some of the steps were very quick, but they all went through that, it was, it worked out really well, and it went pretty quickly for those setup nights. And then this is the flurry of activity that you saw, I believe this is in Ms. Piannetta's room at, at Skokie School, where the parents and students did the setups in the classroom after a, a big meeting in cafeteria. The professional development sessions of the teachers, we've had three sessions so far, we started the third one this morning at seven AM, we've got, every time we do a PD session, we, we hold three sessions a week, teachers can come to any session that they wish, and this week, we're doing note-taking and annotating, so, we're working with Good Reader, which I know the board uses at every meeting, that's one of the apps, we're also using Notes Plus, teaching them about notes and also pages, so we have a lot of, of learning about note-taking and annotating this morning. The infrastructure and tech facilitator position, just two quick updates, the infrastructure project is well underway, additional wireless access points have been already installed at Washburn and at Skokie, and we're starting the elementary buildings and K-4 buildings probably as early as this week, and then, the next, the network and server equipment has all been completely delivered, I think we have all the parts, and finally, at Skokie, we've done a couple of setups on some of that equipment. And then, as far as the tech facilitator position, I believe we offered the position to the select candidate at, at this board meeting tonight, we already, we've already had that, we already had that approval, so thank you for that. At this point, I'd like to turn to the measurable outcomes and talk a little bit more in more detail about how we're coming up with some of our measurable outcomes using the NET standards. So this slide is just the high-level NET standards, this is all six of them, printed out, just so you can see them all in one place. It would be impossible in the amount of time that I have to go through all six standards, because each standard has four substand, has four sub-goals along with them, so that equals twenty-four. So what I'm going to do is pull out one specific one, and sort of take it all the way through, so you can see it in the three different grade groupings, there'll be a K-two, a three, a three-five, and then a, and then a six-eight group, we'll sort of take it all the way through, so you can see how the standards progress in each of the grade levels. And then I'm going to give you an example of how a teacher might come up with a, a pre-assessment and a post-assessment for measuring student growth in one of these standards, so that's what we're gonna do in the next few minutes. So, A, for instance, that I pulled out was standard three, which is the research and information fluency. Notice that it is broken out into three separate, three separate indicators at the bottom, planned strategies to guide inquiry, I'll let you just read the three sub, are there four sub-goals at the bottom? And we'll be focusing on three B for this presentation. So each of the six standards has four descriptors, and then each descriptor includes one or more proficiencies, and these are the ones that are broken out at the different grade levels. So ISTE, the International Cyber Tech and Education, has thought about this for all of the grade level groupings, and the groupings that are listed here. And the example, again, we're going to be using three B, so, these are the proficiencies for grade two for three B, which is locate, organize, analyze, evaluate, synthesize, and ethically use information from a variety of sources. So you'll notice that by grade two, ISTE recommends that with the help of a teacher, students locate and gather information from pre-selected sources, choose relevant information, and identify new questions, and then students use age-appropriate tools to organize and share what they've learned. So as you can see, adults are involved in this, it's age-appropriate. Moving on to what, what this would look like, the same goal would look like by grade five, students will use digital tools and locate and organize relevant and reliable information from a variety of sources, so the adult is out of the picture now, and students are doing this more independently, they analyze and synthesize results, and then they document their sources appropriately, so that's an addition. And then by the end of grade eight, now it becomes more complicated, and students are independently developing and applying effective search strategies with Boolean logic for locating credible sources in multiple databases, categorizing and classifying information, and then synthesizing and reporting conclusions. So I can see, this is, I picked this one because I think we've all done research before, and this is a good indication of how, from grade kindergarten through eight, you can see a pretty solid progression. So, with this in mind, I'd like to use the Environmental Inquiry Project, again, I've used this in a previous example, just because I think it's a good, solid research project that includes a lot of media. So the project that, in this example, is that grade six students will identify a specific environmental to personal significance, they'll research the topic, summarize the issue, report on the causes and effects, report on the perspectives, and propose methods to alleviate and solve the negative effects. And the tech part of it is that they will present the issue and solutions to their peers using apps and, and media of their choice. So, how does this look? The teacher puts together, in this case, a rubric to show how the students, I, I pulled out, in this case, five of the NET standards, but again, we're only gonna just focus on this one for the case of this presentation, since we're trying to compress this and make it very clear. So the teacher wrote all of the rubric identifiers for, for whether it be not demonstrated, novice, proficient, and expert, and if we just look here in three B, you'll notice that it goes from not having developed effective search strategies all the way to using three or more to support their conclusions. So that's, that's the scale the teacher has established, that goes along with the, the research project in this case. So the teachers created the, created what they would like to measure. So how do we measure it? We do two activities, we do a pre-activity, we assess it, and we do a post-activity, and we assess it. So how does that look? This is an example of a student sitting at a computer, so the teacher comes up with the activity of, go into the computer lab, come up with what your environmental issue's going to be, and do a writing activity, you're allowed to use the internet, and I want, as she says, I want you to support your work, and I want you to find graphs, find information, and support it. So they're at a computer now, something they've done before, this is without instruction, so this is truly a pre-assessment, they're starting, this is sort of their opening activity, they're starting to write, they're starting to learn, and this is the type of activity they would start, and the teacher then assesses them, how well did they do? And in this case, they were able to identify the issue using our three B, they were able to just, in this case, locate one source, in, in this case, actually two in the, the student who's in that picture, and then you can see the other ones. So now, we're done with the pre-activity, we're done with the pre-assessment, now the teacher continues this with the iPads in the students' hands, and now the instruction take, the instruction takes place, and there's time, there's, there's time given for the student to use their iPad, to use all of those resources, the teacher provides that instruction, and this is what they come up with. So using iPads, apps, and media, the students spend time doing more research, creating, in this case, more media, where they do research, they create either videos, they create keynote presentations, they create a variety of different, of different, um, re, of, a variety of their own ways of displaying what they've learned on their topic, and then presenting it to their peers. And then at the end of that process, here's another picture of a, of a graph a student created, this time in keynote application. The teacher does the same type of assessment, and this, and in this case, you can see that the post-assessment, the student got all of the proficient, all of the areas that were proficient, went into the expert mode in one, and then, of course, you can compare it to what they had done before, and here are your growth measures. So this is an example of how a teacher could put together this type of a project using the NET standards with measurable goals. Do you have questions, or?
Yes. So I appreciate the focus of this, um, I'm still, though, feel like we're missing something in terms of the transformational potential of an iPad. Everything you just showed could have done, been done pre, post, on a computer. Some things are maybe a little bit enabled by an iPad, but I just, I don't see as, to me, it's feeling like a substitute for a computer, as opposed to something that's really gonna transform the way a teacher manages a classroom, you know, possibly executes against a differentiation, strategies, um, it's not, it's really like a substitute now, like something that's transformational, I get it, pre, post, but I don't get the role of the iPad.
I'm hoping that, since the iPads are not, they're not at the hands of the students yet, I'm hoping that as a result of all of the presentations we do this year, we have bold evidence like this, measurable evidence that the board has asked me for in the past that I'm providing this way, but also there'll be additional evidence to hopefully show what you're looking for, what you're, what we believe is missing. There isn't unfortunately, a, a, some sort of a magical iPad assessment that's out there that's going to show what iPad's going to do, if you put it in, in front of kids and in, in front of teachers, there isn't a standardized iPad test, where we can compare how it was before and how it was after. That's what we're trying to do this year, is learn from this experience, and bring to the board what actually happened in the classroom, and report in real-time authentic situations, and then hopefully, you know, make a informed decision as to whether we should do more of this in the future.
So, so Matt, um, you know, part of the purpose of this is to, um, align expectations between the board and the administration, what exactly the board is looking for, and what the criteria is for moving this project along from, from stage one, which is this year, to, to future years. And I have in my notes, there were, there were three different things that we, we asked for, that we would, we would look for in the study, one was, actually, maybe four, one was we wanted the opportunity to get into classrooms and watch, and watch kids with iPads, and I know they don't have the iPads yet, so, you know, in the future, hopefully, we'll get a chance to do that. But we were looking for a, a study that demonstrated the results, and there are three criteria that I, I, I wrote down. One is, is that it was controlled, um, and so, if, if you're doing this type of study, can you control it against people who don't have the iPads to see the difference in growth? The second was that it was objective and child-centered, I think, give you that, that probably, you know, given what you've, you've shown, that's, that's, I would say that's objective and that's fairly child-centered. I have some questions about inner, inner rate of reliability, if you have different teachers building different rubrics, but, you know, that's something that we can probably wash out. The, the third thing I've written down, and I would, actually would like to check expectations with the board, is that, that we were looking for impact on core curriculum, or impact in other areas and not just technology, and I'm not sure if that's just my recollection and is not aligned with everyone else's recollection.
I think the way we said is curriculum back rather than technology forward, um, is, and I.
And there was another one.
Oh, sorry.
Which was that it's transformational, not substitute. So it's not, it's not just a substitute for technology, we currently have, it's not just a substitute for a computer and a, or a pen and paper, but it's actually transforming the way we either teach or learn, which is what my question was getting at, and I think we should get a response.
So Danny, you had a comment?
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, I guess I'm gonna speak with a little bit of bias, and I wasn't here when you guys had this initial discussion, but I speak with bias because I have a student that's in the Nutria iPad program. And I, I do think when you see how students work, and you see how they use things, I mean, I think that some of our hesitance to this, what, first of all, we're asking, this is, it is a tool, you know, and you're saying it's gotta be transformative. Well, it is, because it makes things, I mean, it's like, go and try to do your work with te, you do your work when they tell you, you can use this computer for thirty minutes, and then, when it's nine-thirty, someone else is gonna come in and use their computer, because you don't have it, you don't, everything, I mean, when you, and I used to teach junior high, when I used to teach junior high, do you know how many times that I had to make the same paper over and over again? Because sixteen boys in the class lost the paper, and I'm, yes, I'm looking at the boys, I had, every one, I had two girls that lost, there's sixteen boys. It is transformative when you see the kids working on it, and it's also, like, I just think it's very, you, I don't know if you had this discussion, I, I wasn't here, I was working, and you guys had this initial discussion, but when you see how it is actually, I think you have to go into the classroom. And then the other part, so you wanna see how it helps kids learn more, where are we gonna get that? Like, I don't know, has anyone done that? Like, unless we do it, where are we going to get that? That's not what people are looking at. They're not looking at whether the iPad makes somebody a better reader, they're looking at whether Read 180 makes somebody a better reader, or Wilson, or whatever, those things you can find, but the iPad in and of itself is not gonna show growth in any curricular area, that's a crazy study, that's just not even. That's just not even logical.
So we'll, we'll mark you down as mildly unconvinced. Perhaps, Bill, so, but that's my recollection, that we had these four criteria, and I think we were pretty intentional at the end of the last discussion, saying, okay, is this what we agreed to? This is what we expect for Matt to bring back to us? And I remember reading over the minutes that, that most of it got in, in the minutes. So, you know, is this something, is still our expectation? Because the last thing we want to do is send, send Matt away and then change the, change his direction. And so we've got seven board members who have to coalesce in terms of what the expectations are, so we can give Matt some clear direction.
Well, maybe you can explain to me, what you mean by, what kind of study would show, what, what would the study look like that showed the iPad helped people learn more in different curricular areas? That doesn't make sense to me. What do you mean by that?
Yeah, I don't think it was as much that-
Okay.
-as it was having an opportunity to observe what kids using. And Matt referred to, and it certainly rang a bell with me, when you have a child's writing on one computer over an extended period of time, parents, teachers can see the growth of it. And as I told Mark after the board meeting, I hadn't thought of it in that light. But I think maybe we're a little premature right here. I think Matt's doing his best to keep us updated in terms of what's going on. If you read current, we went at the talk, there were features in both of them in terms of the kids getting their confused. And I think it's imperative that we get into the classroom, not evaluating, I just want to see how they're using it.
Yeah.
So let's go over it, let's hear from, let's hear from everyone. Matthew, I haven't heard from you.
So I had low expectations, although I'm a huge proponent of this, I had low expectations. And I actually had, I think it was thorough and thoughtful. The one thing, I, and I, that's, I hear you on transformative. Okay, that's going to be the hardest thing to prove. The one thing that this does, that you can't do with computers, you can't do with books and encyclopedias, is, is the interaction, it's the networking piece. And so when you, I'll just, my, your example there was environmentally aware, things that are issues, right? And so when you think about a teacher, I think about the collective, right? The entire world is being decided by people making votes every single day. You go to Google, type in a word, that's a vote. And Google moves that thing, that brand, whatever it is, up in the search, and that becomes relevant. And relevancy is everything, which is why, right, this is the way the world is working. We're a big collective. And so in the classroom, I can envision teachers, or which I hear about, read about, as teachers using these as a way of almost live voting, like, okay, class, if we're going to solve carbon, you know, the carbon issue, okay, here are the different ways we can do it. Let's all use our iPads and try, and here's the way we would do it interactively. Oh, we didn't do it. Now let's talk about why. What are the different things? Here are the different outcomes. Because that's really what computers do, that human beings, we just can't, at the moment, right? We just don't process numbers as quickly as computers, and we're not able to network. So if there was something I would love to see would be at the end, even if we're not, I think it's great on the presentation, I think technical skills are huge, I'm, I'm going to be a proponent of this. And I liked that we're thorough, the last piece would be something around interactivity within the classroom, is that, you're, you're asking-
That's exactly what I want, yeah, that's exactly it. And we're missing a huge window, I think, here in terms of the, you know, what's exciting about this technology, whether it's the teacher interacting, giving one-on-one feedback, getting it back, in a way that allows her to differentiate, in a way that's invisible and seamless to other students, or whether it's, you know, interactivity between kids and some people together. I just feel like it's a huge opportunity that we're not picking up. And I don't, I'm just not sure that these, what do you call them?
The NET standards.
The standards are that exciting. I mean, that just, I, they seem very mundane to me in terms of application to this technology.
But aren't the standards designed to show us what the students do? And you're talking about things like, and this is what I've seen, like, when they do things in a class, you know, there would be a PowerPoint, or there'll be something that the teacher's presenting, but embedded into the student's iPad are different things for the student, different resources. There are possibly resources at their level. So if you need, you need a glossary of terms because you're struggling with this, you can click on something and have something defined for you. But if this is an area where you really can go to town, there's things that you can click on, that you can really extend your learning, because this is a harder piece of work that you're going to work on. And I think that's part of it, but I don't know that that's with these standards, that's more of a-
That's why I think the, I like, I think we're just sort of-
On, on the standard page, I, I'm a very reluctant supportive supporter of one-on-one, because I've seen it implemented very poorly, as, you know, a replacement and set, but incredible teachers do incredible things with technology, and I have seen that too. But if you go further into the standards page, they give some examples, or exemplars of things that you can do with technology that are transformative, really need to. So recognize bias and develop resources while researching environmental issue. You know, if you taught English or history, you know that before you, to do that, you had to go to the library, pull multiple sources, you had to go to a sourcing index, you had to look, you know, there were so many books you had to pull off for one kid, and there was only one of those in the library. If you ever had to do it in your junior U.S. history paper in a high school, it just was a very laborious process. And to use technology as a resource for a kid to get in there and engage, it gives the spark of the, the quick rotating, but gives the critical thinking depth of it. And I see, you know, they're scaffolding the knowledge of the teachers. This is the rubric that is the core skills, that they're infused in a project like these. So manipulating works of art for digital presentations, and then have kids, you know, present different pixel differences, and how that changes the image, producing a media-rich digital story about significant local events based on first-person interviews, practice injury prevention by applying a variety of ergonomic strategies when using technology. You know, and it goes on, these digital portfolios, there's a lot of exemplars right off that page of things that are dynamic and changing, and infusing current curriculum, pulling in the core, allowing the differentiation that you hear on the platform for your higher-level learners, they can pull in higher texts, deeper resources get there, your lower-level learners are able to get into things they can, hear the auditory and the visual for your kids who process differently. I mean, it really is, I see if these rubrics roll out, and you're rolling it out the way that you are, that what I imagine seeing in May is, if you, even if you did a test group, a group that did it without the iPads, and a group that did it, and then interview of those kids after, tell me about this content, my guess is those iPad learners are going to be deeper and richer and more able to tell you what is going on with that content than those that were in the more traditional format with 30 minutes on being up here. And I think you've heard us ask for that look, and I think how you're rolling it out is heading to that track. And that's from someone, you know, who was really reluctant to-
Let's hear from Tom. Tom, do you have a comment?
Um, no.
Maybe a while ago, but-
Yeah, no, I had, I, this is, this is, only in that it's very challenging to get right. I mean, I, I, I think it's, I think it's important, I, I agree with the criteria that we laid out at the last meeting. I do think it needs to be transformative, right? Defining a transformative means is a hard thing, right? And I see, Matt, you, you know, struggling with this because it's a, you know, it's a hard, it's a hard problem to, to resolve. I, I think it does need to be, you know, curriculum-based. I, I, I think we all have concerns that this is just going to become pencil, you know, that we're just going to, you know, we're going to wind up sort of purchasing a lot of high-cost pencils. I don't think that's what's going to happen, but I think the more we can, the more we can struggle with this problem early on, the better off we're going to be, and the more inclined we're going to be to, well, roll it out in a year's time. And so, and-
So I think the notion of the transformative is, is absolutely critical, but the other thing I have to do is also say, this is a pilot project. When we're doing new language program or new math program, we're not expecting it to be transformative as we're rolling it out. I think what's transformative about this technology is the incredible mobility that we talked about, the adaptability, the multimedia capabilities of it, the access to information all in one place. I mean, I think that's what's transformational for learners. Kids have an opportunity, instead of accessing information all different ways from all different tools, this is a suite of tools. I mean, I think we can't say that it's not, but it is a suite of tools that's all together in one piece. The potential, though, I think, is amazing in terms of whether it's writing, aesthetic, mathematics, graphic, any of those kinds of things. That's when we're moving kids up to the novice and expert levels, that's when we're going to start seeing them be transformative with what they're doing, and really be creative and sort of take that next leap for us. And then I think, as you're pointing out, you know, there's, the analytics potential is incredible, the differentiation potential is incredible, but this is a pilot. We have to allow our teachers to experience this, and our students to experience this.
I think that's fair, I guess, just one last plea, the point that Matt made about the networking capabilities of this, you know, how, there's so many different ways to apply that, but my plea would be, like, can we at least just try one way? You know, can we just find one way to do some sort of a network experience with the kids and/or teacher, so that we could fully explore that potential in the classroom?
Yes, is, what, what I, I guess, part of what I'm struggling with is, because I see these things already happening and moving on, and-
But do we have teachers pick their projects?
Yes, the teachers, teachers-
Because last time we met, I couldn't pick that up.
Well, the teachers design projects every time we have a professional development session. And that, and the projects that they're designing are projects that are within the curriculum, so they're not, they're only doing projects that they would have done anyway in the curriculum if they're using an iPad and all of its potential and all of the tools that are afforded with them. So I, I'm, I'm missing where the disconnect is, because I already see this happening. What you haven't seen, because the students have, don't have, haven't had iPads until this month, are examples of how this is rolling out in the classroom. And if, if transformative teaching is what you're looking for, I don't think we're going to have a problem bringing great examples of that in the very near future. But I also don't know how I'm going to, I don't know, I don't know that there's an iPad transformation scale out there that's research-based and carried through, but I can give you examples as we start this. So I don't think we're going to be innocent of that.
So I just want to remind you that you were the one that introduced us to this idea. It was your hierarchy, substitution, I can't remember where it started, and the transformation. It was your concept, which we embraced.
See if I can summarize a couple. First of all, so, you know, we set out a bunch of criteria at the last meeting, and I think we're scaling that back a little bit based on further discussion. I, I, I think, I don't feel, it sounds, it doesn't sound to me like there's consensus at the table anymore about the things that, that, that at least I, I recollected that we've been upon.
There's one of the things that sounds funky. The rest of it, I think, sounds okay. I think we need to get into the classrooms, but the actual, we want to study where, where people have had iPads and people haven't, doesn't have iPads, and we want to test them afterwards to see who's smarter at the iPad. That's control. That hasn't been done, and how would we do that?
So Dana, hold on a sec, let me, let me, let me build up to there and see if we have an agreement on this. So first of all, does anyone have any concerns with using the NET S, NET S is it called?
National Education Technology Standards for Students.
Yeah, is that, is that the criteria? Success on that, I mean, is that what we should be looking at?
I think that's one of the criteria. I mean, I think we also have to look and see how it's actually used in the classroom. I mean, that's one rubric to see how students, again, isn't this focused on students? So it's focusing how students are learning to integrate technology. We're talking about a lot of different things. We're talking about how is this going to be used to differentiate? How is this going to be used to connect students to other people? We're not talking about just this.
No, I agree. I guess the question I have in mind, if, if Matt comes back to us and says, hey, look, I did this study, I, I looked at it, and like, we're really pushing the NET S standards, or the NET standards, right? I think we should greenlight this. Is this board going to go along and say, yeah, that was the right criteria? We agree. You know, maybe there's some transformation that you saw in the classroom, but at the end of the day, what Matt comes back to us, is that, is that the standard we're looking for? Because I don't think it's-
I think you've got it. I mean, I think you talk about, you've heard this plea of initiatives and things to ask the teachers to state and create another set of standards, that's what's out there. I mean, there's not a whole lot of picking and choosing, I mean, that's, that's what's out there. I mean, that's what the tech world says it is. I mean, I think if we're going to hold our kids to national, internationally normed standards, those are it.
Okay, so do we, did everyone agree with that? Okay, so the second question I have is, you know, so we, we have this question of a controlled study, of actually looking into kids with the iPads and assessing them and looking with other kids. Dana, Dana's mildly unsupportive, to say the least. You know, is the rest of the board unsupportive? I mean, we're looking at just the kids in the iPad project, and then we're going to look for growth among those kids, and if they grow in these NET S standards, that's sufficient. Do we say, yes, victory? Or do we say, yeah, they have to grow, but other kids are growing well, too, with technology at home, we want to see that they're actually growing more?
But I think that's simplified. I mean, I think that it would be interesting, and I can't, I don't know of all the projects, but if what you're saying is, you know, fourth grade at X school all does this environmental project, so some, one class has iPad, other one doesn't, I think that there is some value in the teachers all getting together to discuss, like, this is what came out of using it with iPads versus the roving. I think, I don't know that it nixes or pushes it forward, but I think it's a piece of information that is probably useful. I think amongst the teachers, it would be interesting to see, you know, what worked and what didn't.
Matt is, Matt is frequently the one saying, you know, all kids grow. The question is, are we growing faster than, you know, than all kids? And so I guess I look to you, you know, how do you see this?
I think it's different. I think it's different. I think this is a, I, I, implementation is, I defer to the experts. Use of the experts, I'm not an expert at teaching, and so I defer to the expert. It is easier for us to invest if we have specific examples. And so I will give you one that I used privately with people, and I think there are some elementary school teachers here who would know this, but I think about something like the Mayflower project, which is a long story project here. That's great. I promise you, if child A, my child, goes through this with, and doesn't have the iPad, he's going to go and have a, have a certain experience. But if another child goes through this with the iPad, says, look, class, the teacher's, I want to solve this, we're going to try, we're being persecuted for our religion, I want to move from England, and we're going to go to the New World, let's actually do it, okay? You, child, you're in charge of food, you're in charge of clothing, we're going to, here's, what do we need to bring? Here's the weather, let's navigate this, let's actually do this, we're going to actually go over to the New World, and here's the program that does that, and we're going to try to do this. Oh, look at this, we went off course, we're in Sweden, oh, and it's winter, we're in trouble, okay? Like, that's what happened. This, and those children, while you can't really look at them, my, my child would have had a good experience, and will learn, and will grow, and will do something, but the child who has the iPad will have a completely different understanding, not measurably better, but different and probably richer experience of the Mayflower than my child would have had doing it the way we have historically done it. Not that it's, it's just different.
Let's, so, so I get, the question on the table, actually, control study versus non-control study, right? So NET S is the, is the criteria? It sounds like we don't have consensus around controlling this study.
Where do you think that is?
I don't think you can do a control, I mean, the best we can do a quasi-experimental study here, I mean, we're going to start getting into the research methodology, and it's just not, I mean, it's sort of like the medical, you know, it's sort of like doing a medical experiment, if you're going to ever subject somebody to doing something you know is not going to be, you know, as good as something that you know is going to be better, is it really worth it ethically to do that or not? And I think, I think Matt's characterization is perfect, like, you're not going to, you're not, we're not going to be able to get a summative score at the end of this that says, the kids wearing the iPad are doing better, but are they accessing information more? Are they going in more different directions? Are they being creative and innovative themselves and taking new leaps in new directions? Are they having a richer, you know, experience because they're immersed in that world? Yeah, and I think, who doesn't? You know, we, we went from this to these for the same reasons, are able to bookmark, to navigate, to move through it, to switch the pages, to be able to, I mean, there's just the fluidity that comes with learning when kids' minds are going like this, and we want to slow them down with, you know, books or with, you know, other things, but we have the capability of working at their speed and their pace. Why would we not do that? I guess it's my question.
So I, I think when we started this, and we went from a full-blown rollout in the first iteration to a rollout for this year with a subset of population, and then, you know, a, a decision that we would have to make whether or not we, we want to gate it into the second phase. I mean, I think what we're talking about is show evidence of, of progress according to the NET, NET standards, get us in the classroom so that we're comfortable with this. I mean, I don't, I don't see consensus around anything else.
Examples. I mean, I think sort of a library of examples that gives us some confidence that, you know, there's enough case studies of, you know, these kind of, kind of learning that Matt's talking, you know, the example that Matt was talking about.
Can we have board members go in? I mean, I think the best way to see those case studies.
Do you guys have examples?
I think seeing them is one thing, but just having them actually cataloged. I mean, I thought, you know, one page per, you've got an example on a page times forty. How many, how many classrooms are these in?
Can they buy it?
What?
The other thing that would help. I don't know if you guys agree with this, like, I, I like this, I like you. And I'm not trying to, I'd love to hear from the educators. If you guys, I mean, if you could bring up even once.
I think one thing that would be helpful, I mean, we're waiting, I think we're all waiting for the email invitation. You know, here are the classrooms, you know, here's what they're going to be doing. And I, I think you have the commandment of the Lord to try and get in the classrooms.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we should each visit classrooms and see it in action. We should have some of the pilot teachers come to the board meeting and present. And, you know, for instance, it wasn't exactly this, but the presentations that were given at the foundation meeting last week, this week, was, you know, you could see it come alive. You could see sort of this was a technology in the classroom example rather than the iPad pilot example. But those are pretty powerful. And then, you know, at the, at the end of the year, I, I would like to see a catalog of examples that sort of, that, that meet some of the criteria we're talking about. That, you know, where, where we'd like to hear the, the teachers say, why was this transformative, right? You know, because I think they could get pretty excited about it and describe it in their own words in a way that feel, that, that makes us get it, right? They're, they're going to be the ones who convince us, I think, at the end. Transformative, you know, that it, it was, it enhanced the learning. It was curricularly based rather than, you know, sort of technology-based. I think some of those, I'd like to see them try to sort of explain the, the stories in those ways.
Can we hammer down the procedure for getting into the classrooms? Will it come from you or Matt in terms of things that are going on and the teachers? And then what do you want us to do? Contact the building principal that we're coming or?
The district, the technology committee is all the medians or brainstorms these issues. So why don't we just have the committee sort of put together a sort of times available? Maybe sign up or something like that.
I can have like a regular sort of, like a newsletter or a weekly here are the things that are going on this week. And if I can get teachers to pin out time first, they, we know they'll be working on them. That might be an easy way for board members to know when.
And will we just assume that this will be after the holidays in light of, we still don't have computers in some of the classrooms and stuff?
Yeah, tomorrow is the last roll-up date, so.
Okay, so we'll look for something starting in January?
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Okay, item eight on the agenda, the strategic plan goal update.
Okay, we have a number of updates on this month. So the first group is on the curriculum instruction and assessment, of course. And the goal updates are around, several around the administration of the STAR math and reading degrees three through eight, having the vast majority of all of our students participating in those. We also have a couple of professional development updates, particularly in area of our submath. SOBET scores, in terms of options in testing in that as well as math professional development. Sorry, the professional development is a world language in the math. The SOBET results were another piece that we're doing both French and Spanish. Just a little sidebar, I had the opportunity to build and talk about transformational learning. I know that the world language program has gone through dramatic changes from the past, but we had all of our teachers, all of our second language world language teachers in the classroom observing a teacher teach, the TPR method in there, and also a facilitator giving, all of them giving the feedback to the teacher and watching the students interacting. I was in there for maybe fifty, twenty minutes, but the entire time, every student was speaking Spanish. And it was, and an active value in standing up and being completely engaged in what was going on in the classroom in a way that I've, I've never seen the level of language instruction even at a college level where people stayed one hundred percent into the language the entire classroom time. And so, again, it just goes back to the point, thanks for looking up and coming to your classroom, if you care, but also just the experience of having board members go in and see because you can have all these presentations in here about things secondhand, but when you watch it and see that kind of thing happening in the classroom, they are all across the district. It's incredibly powerful. Going through the.
Do the teachers want us in their classrooms?
Some do. Yes, they do.
I know, it's, 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 it's a distraction. I, I would love to do it, but it's a huge distraction as well. I mean, I guess it's all a matter of, I just, it's not like it's been a, it's something that we've talked a lot about, but we've never taken action. I'm wondering what's sort of getting in the way.
Through the curriculum committees, through working with the union, through, there's been, you know, I, I think understanding intentionality on sort of what the purpose of it, but it's going and watching students learn. But I think everyone in the district is willing to have their doors open and have people create and get higher grades, so.
We have them, Matt. I mean, I've seen, I've watched burn and I can, you know, see classes. And, you know, traditionally, I have those and that makes any difference.
So to round out the curriculum instruction and assessment goals, we also have STAR communication piece on our mountain informing them of the testing process and providing solution information there. In terms of RTI, we had completed draft frameworks in the process for RTI decision-making. The various groups have been working at the building levels and then also coming together district-wide. We've also had, developed a draft of a special education parent handbook that we're continuing to edit that outlines procedures for families. Let's see, what else? In terms of operations, obviously, we've got a big dose of finances tonight, both through the financial subcommittees work over the past year. And then, of course, there's an expanding on that with that tax levy presentation and data options. And then finally, in technology, I think Matt actually hit on a lot of the work that his group's been doing in terms of the actual, the iPads, the professional development's been embedded in that. And then just starting the process of doing some infrastructure updates as well that we sort of outlined earlier. So those are all of our updates. As a reminder to our audience and board, these are all available online. There are links to the artifacts that show or demonstrate either progress towards goals or ultimately the conclusion on board goals. So I'm still tracking along with that and doing well and making good progress this year. What's happening? Do you have just? Um, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
They're all tall.
It was very, it was very clear.
Yeah, so, you know, one thing, in some of, you know, some of the questions that people raised about the, the extent to which some of our work has gotten more complex over the past year to, you know, the question is whether or not there's enough bandwidth both on the administrator's part, you know, a teacher is the, you know, the superintendent to successfully execute across all the different goals. And I think this is the type of adjustment, I think, that is entirely aligned with how big organizations have to function where you're constantly prioritizing and, you know, my, my sense is probably the board would support this is that, you know, as, as things come up and we define them as higher priority, that as we can adjust going forward, that we don't have to just do this once per year, that there is the latitude to move things out if necessary. I mean, do we agree with that?
Most of these were pretty level-level. It's our, we're asking for something. If there's any question about that.
But, yeah, I want to actually get a sense of whether everyone agrees with that, that this level of prioritization should happen throughout the years of those loads of towards you. This is the first time I've seen this, you know, sort of moving things out.
Yeah, I mean, I, when I looked at this, it seemed like, right, so things were being moved out, which I don't have a problem with, but then I, I wasn't sure what was left. So, so then what is still the priority for this year?
Well, all of these are priorities. So the updates, the, I think there was one in operations in terms of the paperless personnel policy system. We're sort of saying this is not a priority for us this year in light of the other things that have come up and the collective bargaining and those kinds of things. So that was one. And then other ones were, you can see the notes in the far right-hand column.
Yep.
So the ones that were removed really had to do with that, what previously done in the year prior. So some of this is just a timeline adjustment for some of these. Sorry, Trish, what was that?
Yeah, I was just saying that the, we limited the paperless system for HR, just in light of everything else that's going on. And then the ASOP system, we just changed, we don't depend on that anymore, the time off system. We shifted over to, we did, for efficiencies, that was one of the areas that we decided not to use it as our primary time off system. So it's just this goal that makes sense anymore. Those are the two that we kind of removed.
Then thirty-nine was actually a pretty major add-on. It's a robust one there. We had to do a greater evaluation for all employee groups. And there were two sorts of subparts of that.
Right, okay.
Doing generative reliability among workers and targeted generative liability training. So that sort of replaced the paperless, which was a lot more important.
And it was a direct response to conversations this spring.
And although we understand there's flexibility and, you know, we push dates back and things like that, we sort of committed as a, as a administrative team, as a cabinet team, that we were going to sort of look at these wholesale once a year to really sort of do, you know, put these, make these changes and then sort of share them out with the board. So we, we will continue to make minor adjustments. But we're sort of envisioning this being the, the big changes for our future.
Okay. Betsy, you had a question in the email exchange about that.
Yeah.
If you feel like we're set up for success. And if you feel like this adjustment sets us up for success, you know, we'll be free and we'll support that.
Well, there's, there's a couple of that and to get that answered. So one of them is, I mean, we, we know how robust this is in terms of the amount of goals we're trying to accomplish. The amount of work we're asking our staff to do is huge. Each time we come back as a board, though, there are, even the financial subcommittee came out with a series of recommendations, some of which include some studies and benchmarking and some new financial analysis. Our teacher effectiveness, which we had to talk about, is sort of doing some, some new things on top of it. So that, that's where I get worried, you know, we have a lot to do. And then, and then we'll come to the board table and we have more things to do that are coming out of. It's important work for sure, but we're not really being thoughtful, I think, of how, if we're asking Matt to add some new things, what are we going to take away from that? If we're asking Trish to take that something, what are we going to do? So I think anytime, we just, we talked in general about sort of discussing and give the takes of any topic that's on the table. And I think right now we'll put some more things on without having the corresponding conversation about what we're going to take off and try to balance things out. So that's what I would say.
So I think it'd be helpful to get your recommendation then in terms of what you think we should take off. Which I would be surprised if we have.
Well, I think we probably have in some ways, but it's not something I would want to do myself. I want to consult with a bunch of folks to sort of say, you know, to really delve deeper into some of the departments and, you know, get some of those pressure points and figure out what we could do to relieve that for folks.
I don't know how the people feel, but.
No, I, I mean, I think this sort of flows into the discussion about the next topic. I think we are doing this a lot.
Right.
And I, I think it's to the point where I'm wondering, you know, whether we do need to look at it again. And, and I think we have to have it, I can't really have it in just the context of the strategic plan. I mean, and, and I know that there's recommendations in our financial subcommittee, this whole teacher effectiveness, that's another whole set of work, which really, when I look at this work and I see the board members, you know, names by it, I mean, this, this is, I think, the unfair thing. Is that, like, the part that I'm assigned to, I could do that right now. Because that's my job, you know what I mean? That's what I do.
That's what we're made of.
But like, what, right, but A, B, administrators, not that you guys aren't, the, the other things are more specific to District Thirty-Six. And who knows that? He knows that, Trish knows that. They're going to have to help you or guide you or give you the information so that you can do these reports. So it's really their work. It's not your work. And that I'm, I'm very concerned with. I don't think that's right.
So I think, I think, you know, Betsy's comment in the email subsequent exchange was about whether or not it's, you know, how do we make room for, for new work? Because if the, if the new work is of value, is there something else that slides, slides off the plate? And how do we, you know, how do we manage that effectively and orderly? Right, rather than just adding on more things and waiting for things not to happen very well?
And, and temper the expectations a lot with that because there are a lot of things. We make commitments. We make commitments to the teachers, we make commitments to kids, we make commitments to parents. And so when we make these changes, we also have to be sort of mindful of that and making sure that we're fulfilling all the things we're saying, but also doing it in a thoughtful, respectful way, I think.
So, so maybe as we, as we introduce new things, and I think we continually introduce new things, I think we have to follow that up with a conversation of, you know, is the bandwidth, how do we create the bandwidth? Is it still worth, worthwhile, given what we have to give up, to give up to get this? I, I think that maybe as we go into the teacher effectiveness, we should maybe have that discussion about whether or not, you know, what was, you know, maybe now's not the time. I mean, next board meeting, we come back after we've had a chance to look at the teacher effectiveness proposal and we come back and if you could give us a, a recommendation of if we, if the board really wanted to accomplish that, what would have to move? Does that sound fair?
Well, Kendra and I met this afternoon and we have, I didn't want to send Thomas the email today because it was enough to do it. But I think Dana hits it on the head. In our letter, we have asked that we would like to talk to Trish, we would like to talk to Allison, we want to talk with the principal, you know, involving the teachers. I mean, Dana is right. It's hard for us to do it. And we're looking at a couple of other things and wanting to know the procedure. And it's going to involve time to come as well. And if it's, you know, after I read a couple of the comments that came in late today to Thomas, you know, I think it's important that we decide if we want to delay this until April or May or at some later time. But I don't want to make that decision in December after, because we've got a report to give in January.
I think I've got one in December.
I'll switch with you, Bill. How's that? I, I'm serious, I, I, I do think that this is just, we need to reexamine this before we go forward.
I totally agree. I totally agree. So maybe, maybe the step right now is to move on to this and to talk about, to talk about this. And I think we do need an understanding of if we're really committed to this, you know, what is the cost? And I don't think we've had, had the discussion of the cost of, of doing this. And if, you know, are the costs different if we launch this today versus if we launch this in April?
This is all it is?
Oh, it is already? My goodness.
Board business, communication.
Board business. Okay, so, page three thirty-one, did this, okay, did everyone have a chance to read the, this is on page three thirty-one. This is the board goal subcommittee. And I think this came from the discussion at the retreat that we had, that, you know, the single most important thing that any district can ensure is the effectiveness of its teachers. And that's something that I think, you know, being at the board table, I think oftentimes we talk about frameworks and rubrics and, you know, and studies and finances. And we, we don't have an opportunity to, we haven't been into the classroom probably as much as we should be, should have been. But in addition, you know, in terms of pondering what makes the most effective teachers that we can possibly have in District Thirty-Six, you know, we haven't had an opportunity to ponder that very much. And that, I think where we came away from is that as a board, this is something that the board wanted to really deeply understand. And the way we broke this, this up is that we would break it up into five different sections. One on recruiting, hiring, entertaining. One on onboarding and mentoring. One on curriculum and professional development. One on evaluation and tenure. And one on rewards and recognition. And that board member or collection of board members would take on each one of those. And there would be a study, research and the presentation to go along with each one of those. And it would be a combination of sort of what best practices are, what are the best practices within this district? And I think, you know, we have these slotted out from December. And I'd like to take a moment to, to recognize that there's not really a full month in between this board meeting and the December board meeting in light of the fact that I am presenting in December.
Or December, January for that.
Or January, yeah. And, and there would be these presentations that would, would go through. But the presentations would rely on, you know, picking the variants of our resources. So, so I guess we've had the discussion about how if we were to, there needs to be some understanding of what the costs are. What other comments do we have on, on this approach?
I think this goal needs to be articulated. And I know that we spent a lot of time trying to articulate it this way. And so I apologize to Adam and to anybody, but, you know, the, the teacher evaluation is now statutory. It is statutory. It is the Danielson method. She's done research at the state. I adopted it. We've adopted it along every other school district in the state. Going into the classrooms, you have to be. Going into the classrooms, you have to be trained. Every administrator has to go through the state board training, you have to pass it. You know, to get a teacher, when a teacher gets to the point of correction, there has to be more than one trained evaluator. You know, there's a very discreet system. We can educate ourselves about that. We could perhaps educate ourselves on what supports teachers need to be most effective, like how to make teachers more effective? What things do we need to seek out as a board? What resources? But to actually sort of go through all of this, I mean, we could go sit in a class and learn about all this, and we're making them do all this work, and what's the end game? And I'm just going to be candid with you. I think that when we first started to talk about this, my sense of it was, and I could be totally wrong, because I misperceived things before and I will again, or I will. My sense of it was, is that the board wanted some measure of control over teacher ratings.
No.
No, I mean, I think.
Not at all. I think that's not our, that's not our child as a board.
Well, I think we understand that, and I think we articulate that, but I also think we have experiences with people and certain segments of people coming to us giving their opinion about teachers. And I think that that can be very persuasive to some people. And again, that's my perception. I could be totally wrong, I'll take it back. That was my perception at the time, and I just don't, I just think it needs to be rearticulated. I think the goal needs to be rearticulated.
I'd like to say just for one, that was never my intent, and that is not my impression either. I think the question is, as a board administration, to a large extent, we're a team with the administration, you know, what are the things we can do that will greatest impact the, you know, the education of our children and the teachers that, you know, the primary talent in the district can actually impact kids? And I would like to understand that, the better, you know, from a recruiting perspective, from an onboarding perspective, you know, from rewards and recognition perspective. So many of the decisions we make at the board table has just these, you know, incredible impacts on, you know, the quality of instruction that goes on in the class. And I'd like to know more about, you know, how we can, how we can better support excellence in the classroom. So that was, that was my intent.
I mean, I think one of the big things is, teachers do get a lot of backlash because of perception or whatever it is, and really my understanding of it, which initially was really to create a system of education and transparency for ourselves as a board to truly understand for the Danielson model and what the benchmarking criterion and the very clear explicit rubrics that are out there are, so that we can create a platform and a mechanism to make sure the community is very well aware of what teacher effectiveness looks like. So if your child is in a classroom, what are the components of an effective learning environment? What are the components of an effective instructor? Some of the elements that teachers are going through that are often overlooked, are the hours of professional development and training and support that goes into creating ongoing professional, and those are all in the Danielson model. So I thought it was much more of really helping, I mean, there's a pre-piece, which is educating ourselves as a board to make sure we're clear on what we're saying for teacher effectiveness. And the second piece is a data gathering of what are these elements that are currently happening, and then sort of a research gathering in which we're sort of being assistant and saying, here are some other best practices, and talking to this district, this district, this district, that may be something to consider at some point. And then creating a mechanism to make sure the community is really clear about how this is transitioning to the Danielson model. And, you know, that was my, when we left the retreat, that was my understanding of what we were really looking at, is sort of grasping what's this mean, what's it look like? And, you know, Thomas and, you know, Trish being very clear in providing us with what the district is using, it was a very dense document that has lots of things that I'm not sure we as a board, you know, that, I mean, I don't know that that's our sandbox is to recreate that, you know, when it's already in place.
Matt, any thoughts?
Yeah, I don't know that I had a lot of value on this, I've said it every time about this. I would love to just see the system, right? I always say that, I defer you guys, I don't know how to measure. I just would love to see that you guys say, these are the things, you know, these are the types of teachers, these are the, you know, these are the things in the classroom, classrooms with, classrooms without air conditioning, those are problems, and here's why. You can see that because the teachers are less, I don't know. I mean, it's not what I do, you guys are the experts at it. I understood it to be, here's what we're going to do, we're going to look for that, we're going to look for those characteristics, then continue to look for them. It's not, it's positive. Like, let's find other teachers who have those types of characteristics, whether it's master's degrees, or extra training, or technology skills, or extra language, whatever it is you guys think is important, look and see if we're, it actually shows up, and then whether it's in hiring, training, et cetera, we're trying to build those skills. That is what I understood we were doing.
So, Betsy, any comments?
No, I mean, I think it was really intended as, you know, recognition that teachers are the most essential element of the success of the district. And, you know, there are other things that feed into that teacher morale, for one, inside the state, a really important part of teacher effectiveness. And I think the way this is constructed, that may not come out as clearly, but that's a really, really important part of the teachers being valued, and I think we all, we all respect the work that they do, but, you know, we want to make sure they understand that they're valued and that their morale reflects that, so.
Any last, any last comments? All right, so let me, let Thomas and I take this away and talk about it subsequently, you know, figure out what to do next. So I think, you know, I think one, it sounds like, you know, it's critical that our intentions are clear upon this, and it seems like even on his board, it was not, our intentions were not clear, just one person, two, and oh. So the second thing I would say is that we have to acknowledge the costs of any of the projects, any of the initiatives that need green light, and I don't think we understand that from what we've already done, but that's something that Thomas and I can figure out, we can figure out how to do it. Okay? All right? Oh, is it, is it me again? Okay, fantastic. Okay, we've already mentioned, there's a confidential communication at the end of the board pack, and if you please look at that, and if you have any feedback, you send it to Dr. Agarwal or myself. All right, so we have action items, all of these require a roll call vote. A motion is requested that the school board approve the junior kindergarten program for the 2014-2015 school year with a recommended tuition of $4,395 plus a 150 non-refundable registration fee.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call?
Mr. Halsizer?
No.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
That's chemical.
No discussion?
Yeah. I don't think this program, I don't think we can do this.
Yeah, I was going to ask the question, why, why, why do we have a junior kindergarten?
Wait, hold on, we had this discussion, we had this discussion, last, last one. This is on, on for discussion, this is only, yeah, we had this.
I remember we had the last month, we had it every year.
It was, okay. It's a little bit like Groundhog Day. We had this last month and previous years. So, I mean, you know, we understand Matt's opinion, he's articulated it before. Let's continue with the roll call vote. How far did we get?
And did he say something?
Yes.
Ms. Crumly?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
I'm staying.
All right, a motion is requested that the school board maintain the $3,300 tuition for little.
John, we've had discussions about this, but like a lot of other discussions, they're interesting discussions, I don't really seem to go anywhere. I can, maybe I'll go back and look at the, I, I'm not taking a position on this or not, I'm just asking the subprime, why do we have a junior kindergarten?
It's been a historical program here for a long time, and I hadn't, it's where it started at, but it's been a service that we've been providing to our families, so there's been an expectation in the community. We did not do it for one year due to a lack of enrollment, but enrollment hit back up again, and we'll resume that process.
It's a service.
Why don't we have, you know, childcare?
We have after-school care. We do have after-school care.
Why don't we have, why don't we have a lot of things, right? I mean, why don't we have a grocery store? Why don't we have?
We might start with an educational, an educational issue. We do have before and after-school care, we have a summer school program, obviously, and this is another program that we have, just available for families. And lots of, I mean, if you think about it from a, I mean, you want families to come in and be a part of your district early on, often this is the critical time when families make choices about where they're going to send their kids. And if they're sending their kids to a junior kindergarten program somewhere else, they're likely to keep their kids in that program. So this is an opportunity to introduce families to our district at a very early age, have them come and be excited and happy about the services here and going to stay with us as the time their kids go through.
And they have convenience for another child.
Kids, yes.
I'll lay out the arguments, it's on the post. We have KPL nursery schools and GKs that are privately funded. We used to do this as a historical issue. I have said, it's one of those things when you talk about bandwidth issues, it's one of those things, we just don't need, so I don't know why. I make the same argument, we've got a cafeteria, why don't we open a restaurant? We probably could make money out of it because we get free real estate, and we got, but we don't do it. We've done it historically, you guys have historically supported it, everybody votes that way? You voted that way. It's okay, I just, I don't think it's necessary because of, I don't, it's not something we need to do, we've got private alternatives here. But we've discussed this ad nauseam, so if you all come over to my side, I'd be happy to have you, but.
We could, so, actually, I think, I think the motion has, the motion's been made, the motion's been second, the motion is carried. Six to one. Matt? Oh, sorry, no, five, one and one. Five, one and one.
Getting better.
You're making progress.
All right, let's see. A motion is requested that the school board maintain a $3,300 tuition for the Little Learners Program in 2014, 2015.
Same.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shannon?
I'm staying.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
Ms. Crumly?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Halsizer?
Yes.
All right, so here's what I'm going to do, I'm going to read the next motion.
There's a big difference, I do know that.
All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to read the following motion with the recommendation from the Financial Policy Subcommittee of a $2 million abatement for the 2013 tax levy. So, a motion is requested that the school.
Sorry, will you repeat that?
I'm going to read the following motion with a $2 million. Oh, I'm on, it's on the action. It's on, I don't have it.
No, it's on the table. Bring it, bring it. It's on each side of the.
Oh, okay, that's revised.
Where's the $30 million box?
Oh, okay, I see.
We're going to put that in there for it.
You don't have to transfer funds.
If we're going to do it, all right.
We can't do that resolution now, it would have to be noticed as an action.
Well, we should, we should.
That's for informational, for next.
We should go down the whole package of recommendations.
Yeah, I don't want that, it's just one.
Yeah.
No, it's not going to be. Listen to the, listen to the motion, and you may in fact be the one who moves once I read. All right, a motion is requested that the school board accept a revised tentative 2013 tax levy of 1.6, 1.7 percent, along with an abatement option of $2 million, and to establish a public hearing to be held on December 17, 2013 at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to strike the word option in front of motion. Then we need the word option?
Abatement option.
Abatement.
Well, there's two abatement options still that were presented.
Yeah, we were only on one option.
Yeah.
How did you read just a $2 million abatement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to try that again?
I will try that again. Thank you for your guidance. A motion is requested that the school board accept a revised tentative 2013 tax levy of 1.7 percent, along with an abatement of $2 million, and to establish a public hearing to be held on December 17, 2013 at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Discussion?
You sure?
All right, let's have the roll calls.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
Ms. Crumly?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Halsizer?
Yes.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, a motion is requested that the board approve the grant application and dedicate funds from the capital projects fund for the local share of the improvements if the grants are approved. This is the windows.
This is the windows, the entrance, the paving, concrete work.
The things that we think will utilize.
So what is our share? Can you just repeat?
Okay, all right, just real quickly, you're looking at the entrance to Scopi School, total cost $102,600. We would pay, the state would pay up to, you would pay the remainder. Of course, this is all estimates, we'd have to bid the work. And then for the energy efficiency grant, we're talking about window replacements at Scopi and at Carroll and Washburn. We have been on a multi-year plan of replacing the windows at Washburn, this way we could finish off the last two faces, and then also replace some windows at Scopi that need attention. Total estimated cost of the project is almost $445,000. Of course, that would need to be bid as well, and the state would pay up to half of it because the state grant is $250,000. We've got to get that.
Roll call?
Ms. Owens?
Discussion?
I'll discuss.
Oh, sorry. Discussion?
Now, I'll just pose.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
No.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Halsizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
Ms. Crumly?
Yes.
All right, other business? I don't have any. Okay, public comment, do we have anyone signed up for a public comment? Fantastic, if you could, we have a sign up sheet, but.
I don't know where it is, but it's over here. I signed it.
Okay, fantastic. So, three minutes, if you could state your name and your address?
Sure.
That would be fantastic.
Your letter, 1065 First Street. I have three comments. First, I think that the levy that was just, the tender levy that was just approved should be revisited, because I believe that the board should not manage not only the levy but also the cost per student. Cost per student at District 36 is way out of line, it's much higher than comparable school districts, so I urge the board to manage not only the tax levy but also the underlying costs. And secondly, this 50% allowance for taxes is, is something that we are doing because we have always done it. It's obviously a sacred account, it isn't required anymore now that Rick Winkle is in charge of Co-County, the tax bills are coming out on time. The first bill is 55%, it comes out earlier, you don't need 50% anymore, and I would challenge the board to be fit using 50% as opposed to 45% or 25% or some other number, instead of just automatically applying the number that was used 25 years ago. The final comment I would make relates to these iPads. When a lesson is given using conventional methods, the children are using the textbooks, the school books, and so they see what's in the books. But if they are using an iPad, I'm not sure, they'll have, obviously you don't have complete internet access, you're going to block porn, there are going to be other distractions, and this is one of the hazards of doing research, if people here have done research, you wind up finding things that you weren't looking for that distract you. So while you can find many more things than you can find just from the book, so many of those things are things that are irrelevant and are distractions, so I would urge you to be cautious. So I would urge you to be cautious in using the iPads, and maybe you intend to have some kind of a local server instead of actual internet access so that you control access to material. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else signed up? All right, thank you very much, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm watching.
Second? Anyone with a name? We just all favor?